I'm going to go ahead. I hate to keep us waiting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I'll let Derek be the master manipulator of my computer while we're...
Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Thank you. Sorry, but it just keeps saying no, and then it's that one. Okay. We're just gonna just keep on moving. So our next order of business is approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the regular board of directors meeting from Tuesday, February 14th, minutes of a special board of directors meeting Wednesday, February 15th, which was the faith-based partnership breakfast. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
First of all, I have a comment. Due to remote interest in Microsoft stock, I need to recuse myself or I need to abstain from voting on accounts warrantee voucher 333182.
I move to approve the consent agenda with Todd's rescension.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have proposals for action. These are policies that have been already workshopped. They've had first readings and now we're in second readings for approval or rescension. So our first one is policy 5231, length of workday. Mr. Dieter?
Yes, we read this at the last board meeting and we've workshopped it. And it is just basically outlining the Fair Labor Standards Act and other kinds of things that are legal, like a 30-minute duty-free lunch and those kinds of things. And it also talks about making sure that it is consistent with the applicable collective bargaining agreement articles. And for classified staff, it talks about the breaks that they are legally entitled to, as well as overtime if they work beyond the eight hours a day or 40 hours a week. So since I haven't heard any questions over the last month or two weeks, I mean, since the 14th, I would recommend that we adopt this policy as has been presented.
Do we have any questions or comments by the board? Have any questions or comments by the audience? Okay. Or adoption?
I moved that we adopt policy 5231.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next policy is 5240. Thank you, Derek. Evaluation of staff. This is also a second reading.
Yes, evaluation of staff, second reading. And again, it basically outlines what the RCWs require as we evaluate certificated teachers and principals and associate principals. It also makes sure that we're in compliance with what's been agreed to in collective bargaining agreements. It also talks about the other certificated personnel, which are support personnel and they need their own evaluation process, which we have developed with the association. Certificated personnel are considered non-classroom teachers, support personnel. And then other administrative staff, what we're supposed to do, as well as classified staff. And it just outlines what the law requires us to do. And at this point in time, most of this is covered in collective bargaining agreements, but it's good to have it in the policy so people can access it if they need to. So I recommend, again, because I've had questions, that we move this forward for approval.
Have any questions or comments by the board? Have any questions or comments by the audience? We can take a motion for adoption of policy 5240.
I move that we adopt board policy number 5240.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Next up is the policy 5251, conflicts of interest.
Again, have had no questions on this, but it pretty much spells out what a conflict of interest is. And it's really around receiving economic benefit or something they would do in connection with the district, gifts, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory. And again, it lines up with RCW and WACS that have been outlined. And it's just really updating the policy because the last time it was updated was in 1978. So it's time.
So it's time. Do you have any questions or comments by the board?
No questions, but I think that in our workshop and first reading, I think that we talked about this one, that it's separate from our boosters and our clubs from raising monies. This is strictly about staff.
Yes. Thank you, Julie.
I guess as a board, there's a separate policy for...
Separate policy for conflict of interest with the board, yes.
Then just for...
School employees.
School employees. Outstanding.
We have any questions or comments by the audience? For policy 5251.
I move the adoption of policy 5251 as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have policy 5260, personnel records.
And this is a new policy for the district. The last three were revisions to current policy. This is a new policy. And it just outlines what the law requires us to do as far as keeping personnel records and how they need to be kept and the legal references for all of those. And I haven't had any questions, so it would be my recommendation that we adopt this policy.
Okay. Have any questions or comments by the board?
Just the comment that it's going to be good to have this in policy where people can see that we're directing care and balancing, I guess we have to balance FERPA and HIPAA and all the other federal laws along with...
And collective bargaining.
...and collective bargaining law. And saying it this simply is a really good idea.
Have any questions or comments by the audience? All right. Motion for policy 5260?
To adopt policy 5260 as presented.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right along. Next up is policy 6405, evaluation of building administrators.
And the recommendation on this, because of one that was already approved on the evaluation of staff, 5240, is to rescind this policy. It's a policy we've had on the books since '76 and it's really would just be a duplicate. So I'm recommending that it be restricken from the policy manual and not used in the future. And again, I haven't had any questions or concerns about that, so that would be my recommendation.
Questions or comments by the board? Questions or comments by the audience? Motion, policy 6405?
I move that we rescind policy 6405.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Out. Gosh, I hate to see Michael miss that.
I was thinking the same thing.
His back pain went down just a little bit each time.
Love's a good rescension. Okay, so policy 6410, this is also for consideration, valuation of central office administrators.
Right. And it's also outlined in the law and was included in the evaluation of staff, 5240 policy, just approved a few minutes ago. So we are recommending to rescind this policy as written because it really doesn't apply any longer.
Pretty much the same as the one before.
Any comments by the audience? All right. I will entertain a motion to rescind policy 6410.
I move that we rescind policy 6410. All in...
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Speaking of Michael Parsons, our missing board member tonight, he is out with an injury, a back injury. So I would entertain a motion from the meeting tonight.
I'd like to move that we excuse Michael for that reason.
But only that reason.
Today? Yeah.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. He's been excused. Next, we have an informational portion of the meeting, the calendar. This is a first reading. Changes there. Is what we don't have?
Yeah, we workshopped this two weeks ago and this is the first reading. And it will be brought back two weeks from tonight for a second reading, which is normally when it's adopted unless we have a lot of concerns or questions that are raised after tonight. So the calendar is recommending for next year that we would start school for students on August 30th, which is before Labor Day. Obviously, we would have the Fourth of September, which is National Holiday, Labor Day, off. We would also have October 13th as the statewide in-service day. And then November is the bigger change. We would have November 10th off because November 11th, Veterans Day falls on a Saturday in 2017. But we're recommending that we take the entire week of Thanksgiving off for students, that staff would work on a volunteer basis, and we would hold a lot of professional development activities during that week on Monday and Tuesday. And then we have always had the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of Thanksgiving off. That's a fairly major change. And the change that accompanies that is we would be, the last day of school for students in December would be Wednesday, December 20th, rather than moving it back to the following or the previous Friday, like we did have traditionally done. So the winter break would run from the 21st of December through the 2nd of January, and school would resume again on the 3rd of January, which makes it, I think, a nine-day break from, nine, school day break. And then the 15th of January, we would have that day as the celebration of Martin Luther King Day. And the 29th of January would be the semester break time for grading at the end of the first semester for our secondary schools. February, we would do as traditionally. We would have the 16th of February and the 19th of February sandwiched around the weekend for President's Day. However, the first makeup day, if we had another year like we've had this year, let's hope not, would be that February 16th date. Okay? March, there would be no days that weren't school days. April 2nd through 6th would be spring break in the district. May 28th would be Memorial Day observance. And June 14th would be the student's last day of school.
As long as there's no...
As long as we don't have another year like we had this year. So we're hoping for that. So anyway, the big changes are, instead of a three-day break in November, it would be a five-day break over Thanksgiving week. And instead of a two-full week plus a day sometimes break at wintertime, it would be a nine-day break at wintertime, starting on a Thursday. And that, you know, I'm just presenting this tonight, so I'm not looking for any action. But I do want to let the audience know if they have concerns or have something to weigh in on, we certainly would be happy to give that feedback to the board before they make a final decision on this calendar.
Have we had any conversation with other school districts?
I think we've reached out and said to the other school districts what we're thinking, but I don't think we've had in-depth where they're going to go in that direction. And I'm talking the direction of the week of Thanksgiving.
And that change, because I believe that I saw staff survey around calendar about preferences too, isn't that something that we sent out this year?
There was a staff survey done. Dr. Steach did that. And it's always been discussed with the associations. This is coming forward as a recommendation.
Calendar, all three of the bargaining groups.
Yes, we have a collective bargaining agreement with the certified staff to come to agreement. The others, we share and let them have input. And they've had that input.
Yeah, one thing I like, I mean, this has predefined makeup days, like the first makeup day you said was February 16th. Is that a departure from what we've done in the past?
We've always had three makeup days printed on the calendar, but they've always been three tacked on at the end. So doing the February 16th as the first makeup day would be a departure from any time I've been here.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I think it's worth saying, with respect to the emergencies in this year's calendar, how much I appreciate the good faith of the bargaining groups and the cabinet management team at adjusting the calendar when the governor declared his emergency and the length of school days, which isn't related to this, but just it's always nice to see negotiation in good faith. Good for kids.
So any other questions about this?
Do you have any questions from the audience? I'd say back.
We will bring it back. Be happy to get it published for the community. Everybody waits on that.
Next in our agenda is policy development. This is, these are policies that are up for a first reading. They have been workshopped and reviewed by the board with staff, and now we're ready to bring them forward public. Our first is policy 5270, resolution of staff complaints.
And this is a policy that, again, just outlines for people who have a concern or complaint that doesn't fall within the collective bargaining agreement as far as grievance is concerned, on how they would bring that forward. And basically, it just encourages people, if they have a concern, to bring it forward. And it'll be taken seriously and worked at to be resolved. So that's, I haven't had any questions since we workshopped it, but that's basically what
Questions or comments by the audience? I think this is...
Bring it back two weeks for a second reading.
Next is policy 5271, reporting improper governmental action, whistleblower protection.
And again, this is right out of the RCWs. And it just gives people the process for reporting something and knowing that if it's, you know, something that would be improper, they have protections under the law, the whistleblower protection law. So it gets us in compliance and puts something in the policy book for people to be able to access without having to go to the law books to find it.
It's a number change in part, isn't it?
It's a number change, yeah.
And just as a, I guess, copy edit note, the format of the RCW here could use a modification before we bring it back. That's the format.
Hey. Yeah, it's in there. You mean.
I just want to say this policy and the previous policy are really important so that our staff feel secure in any kind of, whether it's as big of a whistleblower situation or even smaller things, that they have a place to go and that it's going to be, there's going to be respect about any concerns or challenges that they may have. So have any comments by the audience? Policy 5280, separation from employment.
This is a new policy we have not had in the past, recommended by WASDA. And it just talks about what the law tells us as far as when somebody wants to separate from our employment, when a certificated staff member may be released from their contract if they've signed a contract and want released before the end of that contract. It outlines what that will do and what a, and it talks about, hopefully, we'd get resignations or retirements by May 15th so we could do the planning for hiring the next year. Retirement, it just cites the law on the fact that people have to participate in the Federal Social Security Act and the Washington State retirement system so that their retirement accounts continue to build while they're employed. And then programs and staff reductions, and it talks about what the legal process is for that. It's all talked about with RCW, a number of RCWs. And back to a whole page of RCWs, to be honest with you. So it's pretty well contained in the law, but this is an easier way for people to be able to access it. And that's why I'm bringing it forward as a recommendation for a new policy.
Do you have any questions or comments by the board? Any by the audience? Have policy 5281, disciplinary action and discharge?
And this, again, is under personnel, so we are now talking about employees, discipline action and discharge. This has nothing to do with student discipline. And it talks about the grounds for disciplinary action or discharge, and again, incompetence and efficiency, misappropriation or misuse of district property, those kinds of things, neglected duty and subordination, malfeasance. It just got clear through W in the alphabet of reasons. And these are, again, just taken right out of the RCWs and makes it explicit the kinds of things that are prohibited and that an employee could be disciplined or discharged if they participated in these types of activities or actions. And I haven't had any questions since the workshop, so I should listen and research more if you want some.
Have these in policy?
I agree. And I want to make sure I understood some of the conversation we had in the workshop, that the definitions of these terms you explained were governed by case law.
Most, all of these terms have been, cases have been heard on these, and these definitions have been developed through the case law. So when you say incompetence, what's that mean? Well, it's been developed in case law, and that's what we rely on.
Do you have any comments by the audience? Step is policy 5210, compensation.
And this is, it's really around how we, and the timelines for when we would adjust compensation based on course credits to the certified salary scale. When teachers take more classes and earn more credits and move over or up on a salary scale, this explains when they have to have their stuff in and then when we'd make the adjustment. It's also talks about credit for military peace corps, Vista Service credit, and how we can apply that credit to the compensation where we put them on the salary scale. And these are both defined in the RCWs and put us in the, you know, in compliance with that, although we've been in compliance all along. It's just a new policy that, so people, again, don't have to go find it in the number of law books they would have to search to find that specific item.
On the second page where it reads, grant one year of increment credit for each year served in the military, increment credit is on the step tape, the step charts that they...
Right.
The allocation charts of salaries.
They get an increment until they reach the very top. They get an increment each year for their experience. And then if they earn credits, that moves them from, say, a BA to a BA plus 30, they would move over as well as up.
You're going to move down per year, and so this policy is going to have to be looked at if the legislature changes the salary.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
Which is not impossible. Right.
Thank you.
And I like how it specifies, and again, it's not new, but I do like how it clearly says that the superintendent may authorize a year of credit for military service or professional employment.
Do we have any comments by the audience? Last, but not least, policy 6625, private vehicle transportation.
New policy for the district, and we're bringing it forward because of the, it's really out of line because we're doing all 5,000 policies right now, but this is in a 6,000 policy, which is really around the administrative section of the district. And this is, puts us in, within the RCW and the WACS around people using their private vehicle to transport children under unusual circumstances. I'll read just a little of it. The district may request parents or a reasonable adult to drive children to school in their own vehicle on a per mile cost reimbursement basis. The Transportation Department determines when in lieu of transportation would be advantageous to the district and arranges its implementation. Happens very little, but it has happened, and we want to be sure we're covered. And then it also talks about staff transporting students when the student's welfare is involved. For instance, when a kid maybe gets left at school after an extracurricular activity or something, how we handle making sure that that student is just left in an unsafe situation. So again, I haven't had any questions. So I'll see if there are any that come up. Otherwise, we'll bring it back for a second reading.
Doesn't look like it would cover emergencies unless there was some kind of standing written approval by the principal for staff who go to the things like sports events or places where kids could...
It'll all be covered in the procedure.
Will it? Okay.
Like if, like all of a sudden, somebody was there and the principal wasn't there to sign?
I'm thinking of emergencies. And the principal wasn't there to sign or couldn't be reached, but if there's, you have the authority to declare emergencies and act accordingly for kids' safety and welfare.
Discuss that in the procedures.
Awesome.
It's already written.
Thank you.
It's already written.
Thank you.
Comments by the audience?
Okay.
Oh, my favorite part, the good news report. Pages, four papers, both sides.
I was going to tell, this is when we start getting into this time of the year that there is a lot of student competitions. So yes, a lot of good news. But first of all, if you didn't get a chance to look on either our Facebook website or on our Vimeo channel, well, we were, earlier in the afternoon, two weeks ago when we were here at the board meeting, but earlier, we had some students from Endeavor Elementary celebrating Valentine's Day probably a little more festively than we did here at the board meeting, but they delivered some handmade Valentines to the residents at the Bridgewood Retirement Center, which of course is right across the side street from Endeavor, and our video production crew was over there, got some great video, and we got that up. So there's a photo at the top of the good news, but do take a look at the video, especially you'll see how appreciative the residents were to have the kids come over. And that's actually part of an ongoing process. Every month, they do some sort of residence there, but Valentines, it was particularly charming.
Such a nice relationship they have over there, yeah.
And wanted to call attention to the Heritage High School DECA Club for being recognized once again for their school-based enterprise, and they achieved the gold level recertification for the eighth year in a row for their student-run Wolf Den Cafe. If you haven't been out there at lunch, they do a brisk, brisk business there and obviously meet a high level of standards to get this award eight years in a row. Mountain View and Heritage High School students qualified for DECA at the State Career Development Conference, so they will be heading on further in the process, but we had a number of state award winners, and you'll see, and 18 from Mountain View, 16 from Heritage. Then we moved to FBLA, where we had Union, Mountain View, and Heritage High School students placed at the regional, and they will be heading on to the state competition. And again, you'll just see numbers of students, I wish I could read all their names, but we have dozens and dozens that are heading on both in DECA and FBLA. As you know, we are getting more and more people aware of our Family and Community Resource Centers as well as our Students in Transition Program, and so we're receiving a lot of different support. One of those is kind of an offshoot, and that was a check that was recently presented by IQ Credit Union along with Police Activities League to expand the number of after-school sports camps that we've been offering, especially in some of our lower-income schools, so $2,500 from IQ Credit Union to help Powell put more of those sports camps out there. Image Elementary's Family and Community Resource Center along with their PTOs then combined to sponsor a make-and-take craft night for students and families. They partnered with one of our local businesses, Rionet, who sent three employees, and they taught, the students had a screen print, so they did a variety of different items, and they did that with their families. That one was Family and Community Resource Center, PTO, and local business all working together. We had 15 students from Legacy High School and IQ Academy tour Columbia Machine. They're working towards securing a unique industrial internship. The internship's a new combination of in-class and onsite learning led by one of our teachers, Mike Kleiner, and that's a, we've had internships happening at our comprehensive high schools, but this one is one with Legacy and IQ, so we'll bring information back on that. As I mentioned, we had more and more interest in our Students in Transition and our Family and Community Resource Centers. So we had two different groups at Chehalah Middle School organize some fundraisers and collect some donations. So Ashley Lynn, who is an eighth grader at Chehalah, organized a pancake breakfast fundraiser to benefit the Students in Transition. She raised $752, and they're going to be using that to purchase much-needed hygiene items. And we had a couple sisters at Chehalah, Eliana and Mariah Ross, who wanted to help students as well, and so they organized and held a coat drive in January, and they collected more than 100 coats and gave those. Then we had Zip Eco Recycling and Waste and Investment Development Management had another donation drive for our Family and Community Resource Centers, and they collected more than 700 items, and they also donated Nike workout gear and track shoes for our high school track teams. So lots of stuff going on that are around our Students in Transition. And again, only that's just a brief highlight of all of the good news, and we'll be posting that on the website and sending that out tomorrow for folks further read.
It's pretty impressive to see how much is going on in the district and how involved our kids are in serving the community. I think it's nice to see our kids that involved. And now, without further ado, we have our Chief Operations Officer, Mike Malino, here to give us the most exciting of budgetary updates to the board. Go, let it go.
We want to talk budget tonight?
Please.
Okay. You have the two documents that you get to review once a month that look at financial indicators for the school district. The first is an update of our enrollment estimates for the year, as well as how many staff that translates to and where we actually are in the district with regards to how much staff. And I thank Bruce Nash, who's actually not here tonight, I'm sorry, for doing a lot of the work and helping get, put this together. You can see this month, overall, our enrollment, we're still above budget where we expected to be. Throughout the year, we update this every month. We look and see, make estimates for the year, where do we think we're going to be? In the month of February, our enrollment was a little higher than we had last year, so that the trends spiked up a little bit. We'll have enrollment again tomorrow. From that, we're pretty well to the point where we'll start doing our staffing for next year based upon the estimates that we have. We've already worked a little bit with Mr. Monroe on the elementary on that. But you can see, under staff allocation, under Evergreen total, we've got it broken out by elementary, middle school, high school. Overall, we're about 13 below the allocation in terms of staffing, so we're meeting the contractual requirements that we have, but with respect to where the kids landed, we've been able to under, we've been a little under the allocation this year. But again, that's 13 under out of about 1,240, so that's within about 1% of where we would expect to be. So that's a pretty good, I think we're doing a pretty good job with that this year. On the special ed side, you can see the total number of budgeted staff and actual staff throughout the year. You generally see increases in classified staff as the kids are counted and everything settles in, so there's really no, nothing strange with any of the trends there. As we've been saying kind of throughout the year, this looks like a relatively normal year with respect to staffing and enrollment and budget-wise, we feel good that the numbers are going to exceed what we had budgeted in terms of student counts and our staffing, management of staff is, we're going to be below what we had allocated, so that's a good thing. And that ultimately translates to the second document that you have, which, to remind the board, we get to this time of year, and every month, I start to look at making estimates for where do I think we're going to end up at the end of the year. We budget in the summer and have kind of a blueprint of where we're going to go, and then we actually get into the year, and the actual year is always a little bit different than what we had considered when we budgeted, but we update the estimates every month, and you can see in the far-right column on this document that the estimate would be that we would see the fund balance remain right around $28 million, which is a good thing, that our revenues exceed expenditures, and it's, again, a relatively normal year when you come to the end of the year. And so that's a good thing. And you can also see that as we have, we continue to meet the board's requirement of the 5% fund balance policy that we have, and we always make sure that we do that. At this point in time, it's progressing normally for the 16, 17 school year, and we're kind of getting into the swing of budget getting thicker, you know, deeper into the budget for next year, and we'll continue to talk about that as we move legislative session and see just exactly what they end up doing to us or with us or for us. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
We live in interesting times, don't we?
Seems like every year we say that, though.
It's more interesting.
How we managed to get our way through it.
Yeah. It's definitely the very end.
Other questions for Mike? Questions or comments by the audience?
I wondered if our openings in, whenever I go to the openings for open jobs at Evergreen, it seems like there are half a dozen or more special education teacher openings out there. Does this number 14 correlate with that at all?
When we have an open position, usually it's because someone's left the district, so it's a, at this point in time, anyway. So the number of staff that we would have would actually reflect in the budget. So even if it's an open position, it's a position that has been filled at some point and either someone left. If, throughout the years, you see the number increase, that would be more reflective of the student changes generating more positions, but at this point in time, I would think any posting we have now is more likely a replacement of something.
Great, I just have two or three things to cover. Just to remind anybody who is able, that we'll have a School of Distinction Assembly tomorrow at BBC at 8:30. They receive that distinction. We've been trying to find a time to give an assembly, and tomorrow seems to be the time, so hopefully, somebody can be there. I will, and I know others will, but I know people are busy. I also want to remind you that this Friday, the third, we have a principal-for-a-day luncheon at Crestline. If you're going to attend, I'd sort of like it if you would let Elizabeth know so that we can not violate open public meeting laws. And then I also wanted to let you know that on March 9th, which is next Thursday, a week from Thursday, we're going to hold a community meeting to discuss the immigration policies and make sure everybody understands what our responsibilities are as well as what our stance is as far as immigration officials coming into schools and those kinds of things so that we can hopefully allay some fears that are really rampant in our community. And I also will want to share with you in the later workshop some ideas around a resolution that we may want to take on at the next board meeting.
Not going to be held at John?
That's going to be held in this room, this room. So I would really encourage if anybody could come to that, that would be great. I know most of the cabinet members are going to be there, and I'm sure all the principals will be there, but it's pretty important for us to be sure that we are working with our community and our people in our community to let them know specifically what our requirements are as well as what our stance is in dealing with anything that would be outside of those requirements.
What time?
Five o'clock. Right here, in this room.
That, this is, this is a critical meeting in my mind. There's a lot going on, and our families need to feel safe.
I also have one other announcement, and I've told the board this in August, but I think it's time to make it public. I will retire July 31st of this year. Probably the toughest decision I've ever had to make in my life. I love this place, and I love education, and I have a passion for kids, but I've been doing it for 48 years. And my wife says, "You're 70, big guy. It's time to come home and spend some time with me." And I agree. But I would really be remiss if I didn't thank all of the cabinet members that I work with every day. They've been amazing, and I know I'm leaving this district in great hands on the executive administrative team. We have outstanding principals. I'm proud, no more than you know, proud that I have hired 17 of the 21 elementary principals since I've been superintendent. I've hired five of the six middle school principals, and I've hired every one of the high school principals, and I believe we have an outstanding principal corps. I'm also extremely proud of what I see in classrooms, and I'm in classrooms all the time. And our teachers are doing an amazing job with young people and care deeply about young people, and I'm so proud of that. And I don't believe we could ever have better support and help than we get from our classified individuals every day, whether they're driving the bus, feeding our kids, cleaning our schools, or in the classrooms, like I saw lots of them today when I was at Sunset, supporting children in their learning, and the people who are in the front office answering the phones and taking care of our community. But most importantly for a superintendent, I have to say, the nine board members I've worked with have been extraordinary. I have never worked with anybody on our board who had a personal interest in something they wanted to advance. This school board and all the others who have been on the board in my time have been here for one reason and one reason only, they care about kids. They care about the kids in this community and making sure they get the best education we can possibly give them. And it's been my pleasure to work with those nine people over the years, and I want to thank Victoria Bradford. She hired me. She's the only one left. Tolerated me for 11-plus years and is the best champion for kids I've ever worked with. We're darn lucky to have these people, led by Victoria this year, but every year. The dedication and the caring that these people have for our kids is amazing. So it's time, and I want to thank everybody for everything.
I have something to say about this. It's with a lot of respect that we accept your retirement as if we have a choice, but, you know. You know, John has been a stellar superintendent, and his absence from us is going to be deeply felt by all of us. John, you've made a lasting impression on Evergreen Public Schools and the greater Vancouver community. The board, you know, was made aware of John's desire to retire really kind of a couple of years ago. He started talking about it and was, and as we talked to him about it, he was gracious enough to stay with us to ensure that things that we had going on kind of were settled and ushered through, you know, things like our, you know, labor agreements. I know one of John's biggest passions was our Equity Initiative as well, that was, you know, made sure that that was well underway with everyone, and the Teaching and Learning Initiative LIFT was launched during that time. economic times, always keeping our students and the classroom the priority. His steady leadership also saw us through the Crestline fire crisis, which he turned around in record-breaker time, and just, it was amazing to watch. A vastly changing student and community population, and a challenging legislative situation that's, as we alluded to earlier, has been ongoing for a while, and he's been up there as one of our biggest advocates with the legislature. I do, you know, as I was thinking about this, I, I've talked about this before, but it's comical to me that, in retrospect, you know, when we originally hired John, the thing we were most worried about was, could he really handle the whole community engagement piece? Because he, you know, had been behind the scenes, working with curriculum, doing his thing, but we never knew that he would become the amazing community leader that he's, that he is. And that was the big, exciting revelation about John that, that I think has been amazing to watch. You know, your leadership in the community has made Vancouver a better place to live and work and to go to school. And I, you know, have no doubt that John's going to continue to play a big role in shaping the future of Vancouver. He won't just, like, go away and just travel and have fun all the time. John will leave his mark on our school district. His belief in our children, the staff, and the community is now embedded in our culture. He has set us on a course that will continue to ensure our children have the best opportunity to have productive and happy futures. I'm already missing John, even though he's going to be around till the summer. And I'm so excited for him for the kinds of plans that he has for him and Janet to take some exciting trips and to do some things. I know she's, she's going to be excited about that. But I feel happy knowing that you're still going to be part of our community, still around. So you're not rid of us, and we're not rid of you. And this is emotional, because yes, we've been stuck together for a while, and
Stuck.
It's been an amazing ride, driving the bus in the right seat.
Of driving the bus, because I, I think we often, 48 years, I mean, if we think about it, it's a long time to impact education the way that John has. And he's done just about everything in the school system, from driving the school bus, right, John?
At one time, I drove school bus, yes.
And all the way to Texas, right, with a bunch of high schoolers?
All the way to Texas from Astoria.
And you survived that and continued on, right? But I think we often think about that. And I, and I think about, you know, where I'm at in my career and where everybody's at, and to imagine 48 years in your career and have the impact on the hundreds of thousands, I mean, really, hundreds of thousands of students that have gone through John as a teacher, as administrator, as a superintendent for our district. And I think that we're extremely fortunate that he's been our leader. And I am blessed that I've had the opportunity to work with him the last five, six years, and learned a lot from him, and I've seen his dedication to the students in our community.
I guess I'd like to add to what Vic has been saying and what Julie's been saying, that you are leaving quite a legacy in our district. And I've been on the board, I guess, about nine years, and you've been the superintendent for every one of those years. And we, Victoria alluded to some of the tough times, and you really can prove yourself as a person, as a superintendent, as a leader during tough times. And I remember those early years, you know, nine years ago, eight years ago, seven years ago, when we had really budget difficulties, and we cut, you know, cumulatively over $20 million. And you were able to come up with plans where we did not cut any teaching positions, came up with a plan to be able to not only cut, not cut teaching positions, but to allocate resources so we could fund all-day, everyday kindergarten for every one of our elementary schools, even though we weren't getting full state funding at that time. Just tremendous accomplishment. And as Vic was saying, you always have that lens of doing what's best for kids. And that's been an unwavering principle of yours, and something that, you know, I continue to learn from you. And so, yeah, I just want to say thank you as well, that, you know, the legacy you're leaving for our kids, for the hundreds of thousands of kids throughout the 48 years, has just been tremendous.
I'm younger than that.
I know. So is everybody else in the room. Don't worry about it.
Everyone's younger than 48?
I'm not sure. Close.
He was teaching history when the man landed on the moon.
Yeah, which is history.
I was teaching history when man landed on the moon.
That must have been a remarkable day.
It was.
You know, I don't know that we have days like that very often anymore, but that's off the subject, sorry. I showed up, I guess, a little under 11 years ago. If it's been 11 years, then it was under 11 years ago to, at Jones Geldon's urging, to thank the board and the district for buying nine acres of land next to my house, which was otherwise destined to become a bunch of cheap apartment buildings. Way there's irony in saying that, isn't there? Because we could use some cheap apartment buildings these days. But learned, learned how approachable public officials are from you, and also from Deb Wallace and Joan and everyone else who was on the board, which sparked my interest in public service and activism and civic action. You remind me a lot of everything that is good about my own father, and the way that you have approached and dedicated yourself to the next generation every single day. And that caused my confidence. I used to be very suspicious about the public school system for my own reasons, but it caused my confidence in public schools and this school district and the individuals that work here to grow and tell the confidence that I feel for you and for them is complete. And I want to make sure you went away with that from me tonight. Thank you so much for the guidance that you gave me about public service, just by being who you are, really. And it's just not going to be the same. It's going to be an interesting problem to solve, to move forward. And I'm glad you're not going completely away. But I, I highly recommend taking some of those trips that you've been talking about at either. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. I am not going away. This is my home, and it will be my home forever. And I plan to stay very active in the community and support this school district in any way I can from a distance. So thanks for everything. Tough night, let's move on.
I have the extra-large box of tissues here. Thanks, John. Next up is board comments. Do we have any more?
Only more banal things. I ought to say in public meeting that with respect to legislative work, there are a couple of things that I think the board should be watching. I've been going to the Wazda briefings and did a little bit of travel up to Olympia about it. And as you know, and as we've discussed, the legislature continues to work on education issues at their pace. And there isn't anything really substantive that I can add to that, except that Wazda did ask me to gather some information and write to all nine of our legislators and tell them what the consequences would be if certain bills, if a certain bill about our levy collection authority didn't pass. And I did that and sent you all a copy, and got a couple of responses back from our one District 49th representative and one from the 17th that I can share with you later on. But it doesn't look like there was any news in the response. I characterize the potential for loss from the levy-lid law in terms of certificated teachers, based on consultation with John and with Mike, would be a very impactful way to put it. But I also want to make you aware that at the federal level, the House has begun considering HB 604. Is that the right number? Which would repeal the Elementary and Secondary Education Act altogether and replace it with a voucher system. So that is now been officially proposed and is working its way through the Congress. Our legislators could probably use some opinions and advocacy about that. And those are the two things that I wanted to make sure were available to you.
Great in the actual content, but thank you for following up and keeping us in the loop on that.
Or your information.
Yeah. Anything else?
Several of us attended the Faith Base Partner Breakfast. Really strong momentum, the group, the Equity, when we speak about it a little bit earlier, but it's, I was really impressed with the partnerships that are going on and just more and more awareness and more people that are doing things. That was really nice to be there.
Yeah, I was going to say that same thing, because Julie was there, Rob was there, I was there, we got to, you know, be there with John. And yeah, for me, it was the first exposure to the Faith Base Partnerships, and first time for me to go to the breakfast. And yeah, I was just blown away by the community's support to help our kids. It was just awesome.
Firing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Super creative people, too, coming up with great ideas to help.
Yeah, we sat with our table, and it had, I'm blanking on his name, but he's from the Juvenile Justice, part of our government, takes care of young people who've made some mistakes, and he's come to those a lot. But them and some leaders at Pacific and me and one other person, and they cross-pollinated right there during the 10 little minutes that we had sitting together. And Heather actually got a couple of ideas for her school, just by showing up and talking like that. It only took the 10 minutes. I really like that we're doing this in our district.
Yeah. I mean, there was structure to it, right? I mean, there was food, which I liked.
There was food. Thank you for the food.
I liked food.
But then they had the, like you said, the 10 minutes where to brainstorm at your tables to figure out how people could partner with the schools. That was really good.
Been exciting to watch how that's just really grown, and it's taken a life of its own and a lot of ownership by the community and what's happening in our schools. So it is a really inspiring program that we've got going.
I have to say to you, that would not be where it's at today without Melanie Green and her stewardship of that program. And I hope you were able to read the article in Sunday's Columbian regarding Melanie. An amazing story, but one of the most amazing young ladies I've ever had the pleasure to work with. And she's just, it's her enthusiasm and persistence and working and reaching out that has made that happen, as well as community members who are just really open to helping people. And it's, it's been a great partnership, and will continue to flourish because we have great people working with it.
Have any future agenda items that would like to be brought forward to the board? Or is anybody happy with the list we have already?
There is something, but not yet.
Something brewing, but not ready.
It's, it's not fully formed.
Okay.
Idea right now.
All right, that's fine. Okay, well, we are going to go into recess to sign documents. That'll take us probably 10, 15 minutes, and then we will reconvene for a board workshop. There will be an Equity Team update, legislative updates, some more policy work, book study on most likely to succeed, another budget update, and superintendent's update. Then we will go into executive session for personnel. Thank you for joining us tonight.